Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the great flag for which stands one nation under your own. In the business of with the liberty and justice of our home.
Thank you. Alright, got everybody here, so you got a court to go there. I hadn't heard any changes to the regular agenda, guys. Okay, where do you want to put that?
That's why I'm not giving the vision, tight authorization. I think more is. Pretty button drive.
Yep.
That's where we deal with their like, with their like a license for headquarters.
Yep. Okay, any other changes? Okay, call for motion to accept with the addition of the uh, kidney side authorization for headquarters. Make some motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, okay, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries, any changes on the consent agenda? Any questions?
I do have a question, actually. Um, I was looking at forty-three eighty-four with that CDL testing button. I was just wondering, do we have like a contract in place for the like newer employees that would be coming on board? So what happens if they like, if we pay for CDL? Which can be pretty spendy and then they decide to leave?
Well, that's why we did, they don't send somebody off to get a CDL training till they've been with us for a while. So both the employees that have been with us for a while, and once we start seeing some stability with them, then we'll get their CDL. And that helps us with the removal of like that, so we don't have to worry if we can't even drive the truck.
Do you think it's worth like having some kind of like payback if they leave or?
I honestly, when for both the points that we have had go get their CDL training, I'm not too worried about if they're to leave, um, if we had a problem with it. Then it might be consideration, but if we send like an employee off to a training or conferences, not much different to the cost. To look at holistically if we send them to the training, the CDL train is a bad drastic cost difference. But.
I thought to me, it was like five grand or something.
I think it's a little cheaper than we thought it would be. Some of them, because we already have like the truck, and they're not doing all the endorsements out there. They're doing it as a class fee. You know?
Okay.
So they're not getting like a ticket endorsement and things like that.
Okay.
Is, we're surprised, it's still expensive. It's not, I won't say it's cheap, but it's not like five or ten grand or something, I don't recall it being that. Maybe it is more expensive than that. Uh, but like said, we typically won't send them to it unless we're fairly comfortable with them going to state, but.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda?
Yep.
Oh, I had one question. It appears as if we've got five different food track applications. I just want to know if they've indicated where they will be setting up, I don't want to have any trouble down the road.
They're not requiring to have like specific locations, but uh, most of these have been like at Miller Park or the parks, so.
Have we had any complaints?
I know, complaints is.
Good, that's all I wanted to make sure of.
Yeah.
But, thank you.
Alright, there's no other questions, I'm on the promotion to accept the consent agenda has his.
Motion to accept consent agenda.
I'll second.
Make some motions, Stephanie is a second. Okay, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, see council minutes from last time, really, changes, mods?
My recollection, they looked good.
Yep, good, so let me make a motion to.
Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from May fifteenth.
Can anyone make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, okay, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, public comment, anybody got anything you want to chit chat about tonight? One once, one twice. Alright, we will move on. Sheriff's update, I don't think we got that this time around, right? It'll be next time.
I do have, uh, can I add something in the sheriff's update?
Go ahead.
I received some commentary from uh, several neighbors of mine. This last Saturday night at three thirty in the morning, there appeared to be some of this uh, little car racing going up and down seventy-six. Um, some people stepped out and took some video of it and we can't get plates, obviously, they contacted the police, but I want to make sure that uh, we're making our officers aware that that was happening on the weekends and the wee hours of the night.
Down the east side of seventeen ninety-eight.
And it, it, I think it's in conjunction with some of this road racing that's going on in Fargo, coming down university and then over, so. I'm only speculating, but I want to make sure that we got an eye on that, because I don't want any little kids getting yeah, it sounded like it was middle of the night when it happened, but God forbid something like that would happen in front of our schools.
There, you know, I look right over there, we've talked to the cops, they actually go out there and hang out and wait for them.
Right.
So they're posting up out there.
Good.
The school parking lot.
Have they caught any of them yet?
Yeah, they caught, I think it was last summer, they caught four or five of them.
Okay.
And then someone, he was sitting with them and someone else decided to come sit down. He went to go with them, I think a couple of them ran on.
Really?
So, yep, they uh.
We had them going two by, two by two, they were coming down.
Yep.
And they only do it for, you know, ten minutes and then they get out of the area.
Yep, they were doing it before twenty-five, so there's only the one way and not terminal team. But now the cops are actually sitting over there pulling people over.
I appreciate your commentary on that, thank you.
Yeah, we had pulled and borrowed last year.
Good.
Okay, anything else, Sarah on that?
No, that's all I have, thank you, thank you.
Alright, so now I get to the fun part of this thing, recognition of outstanding service, Russ, come on up here.
Well. Yeah, right, I tricked first. Ah. This guy I have known now for what, seven years? Long as you've been on, so I figured, so anyway. This was the person that taught me everything I needed to know, planning and zoning, ordinances, all the stuff that I had no clue about until I came on as mayor. And it's like mind blowing how much stuff is going on, you guys have all witnessed it now, you've seen how much is in there. Like drinking out of a fire hose, but you were patient enough to work with, really appreciate that. And I need you guys go to two meetings a week, follow us back to backs and the uh, taco stuff that's going on around here. Like I said, it's been a pleasure working with you, I wish you'd stuck around another year, but I understand why.
We didn't have pink balls, if we complete this together, I, 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 but I also told you I wasn't leaving till I left. I leave my house, I left feet first.
Yeah.
Food poisoning took care of that.
So anyway, on behalf of the city though, I did want to thank you for that, and I also have a token of I appreciate it. For eighteen years of service, again, planning, zoning, all of it be done, I appreciate it, and you've done all of it down in quarter city, I especially appreciate you working with me. Still that circle, so thank you.
Better.
Thank you, Russ, we all want a handshake.
You can't uh, reach, I don't want to follow a command, but.
Thank you.
I like tripping on tools. There you go.
Alright. Back to business as usual, alright? Okay, number nine, who's got, Jimmy, you want to take that one?
Uh, the bid opening for water sewer storming street, sanitary storming street improvement district twenty-two dash four. Tuesday, May ninth, and receive bids from seven subcontractors, go underground KPH, further improvements, company AJR, first you, finished concrete. RL Larson and R R excavating, a low bid was um, park construction.
Are you looking for total amount?
That might be one of them. For six and six. Here we go, alright, so the bid opening for sanitary, now it's over, my street improvement district twenty-two dash four was Thursday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Received bids from five contractors, park construction, Dakota Underground, KPH, JR, first you, and all finished concrete. Uh, low bidder was park construction company, the bid of six million nine hundred ninety-five thousand, hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, this year, that's over nine million, so very good bids. Um, the high bid was eleven and a half million, or seven, seven million dollars, so um, park construction hasn't done any work in the, in the, for the city in the past, but um, they did supply all the required information, they have responsible bidder policy, and therefore approved the construction contract to park company, and then all the six million nine hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Could you contact them, ask them that they are confident in that, that they are a full million dollars less than the next closest bidder? Two million, two point two below your estimate, they uh, word with it, so everything gets a bill.
It's a good thing.
I'm not going to complain, but okay.
Okay? We'll just do nine A, then anybody got any other questions on that one, on the bid, was it going to look for a motion to accept?
My only question is, what was the, what was our estimated timeline again, for that, for that section?
So they either want to start on Monday, or following Monday, depending upon whether they can get sanitary support structures. So the schedule that they provided, as I'm starting Tuesday, I got an email late Friday from their project manager that says they would want to start either Monday or on, depending on getting the precast panels.
Okay.
And then, so they would have to, by contract, they have to complete the Lost River Road to the bridge this year, and then from Lost River Road, to basically do league line next year.
And how does that balance with what we're, we're going to start here on, on the east side?
So everything's going to have to, everyone from Lost River is going to have to go the west anyways.
Yes.
So they'll have to use the second and third entrances.
Okay.
The Lost River, and then may, maybe, they'll have to be a crossing at Lost River Road from every lane to get rounded through when the time comes, but as far as like, I can be here, I don't have a lot of specifics on it, they just requested a pre-construction conference Friday, so we're trying to schedule that here for Thursday of this week, okay, so almost more specifics on maintaining access and that stuff, I'll understand.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay, so on number A here, can we want to make a motion to accept the bid?
Make the motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Let me do a second. Okay, call in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries, Jimmy, you want to talk about traffic control, you want to?
Yeah. I think it's kind of a, if they do anything next weekend, right away, it'd be some but yeah, a little more, so I think it's probably more realistic to be not, it's coming Monday, but the next um, they're still, they have, it's a pretty tight timeline to get this up by September, he said first phase, so they want to get it going and get it going.
Right, I'm assuming the first thing that's going to happen probably is the trees, just like on the east side?
Yeah, they'll start with the sanitary sewer, take that from Lost River but down towards west, but towards lazy area of that area.
Okay.
That's, that's why they, the project happens, they have to get the east to the project, specific to the project after you're done.
Okay.
Brenton, is this where we wanted to discuss? On Wall Avenue or not?
Right.
Into regard to, to traffic, future traffic control on, on Wall?
So we were going, that was, segue into the next site over there, we could talk about it now too.
I just, I wasn't sure where you.
Let's, let's keep it on ten.
Okay, that's.
Let's finish out.
They kind of tied together, so.
Yep, I just wasn't sure you wanted, okay.
Jimmy, what'd they talk about as far as dust control, I mean, are they?
They said, Park said. Wait, I, what I kind of got out of the.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
But um, if, since all the traffic has to go west, west. Lost River, west, they didn't really have nation. I mean, dust control path, could incorporate into their project, and they definitely would. That, so it's just a matter of how much, how much. But as far as from the bridge to Lost River Road, like they're going to start so fast.
I think what I might say on that one, if we are going to do the dust control though, I'd like to know whether they're going to have a chance to be able to do that road from Lost River all the way to the diversion first.
Yeah, he did emphasize to me that um, a five contract, you know, we're already done this year.
That's fine, but.
We'll find out more.
That's what I'm saying, and if they're considering it, then we should have to, well, pay attention to that.
I think it's quite honest about the best thing.
Yep, agreed. Yep. Okay, can you build some any questions on nine?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to ten then, who wants to pick that one up first?
I can start it with Jim and uh, Jason Dunson, this guy here, uh, he's kind of engineer, well, that's calling here. Uh, I mentioned Jason last week and Jim, after talking, calls my land stream, there are concerns about speed limits on Seventy-Sixth Avenue, Jim, probably be good to have just a touch base with Jim and Jason about all speed limits are set, worse if you've talked high level about that, I say you know that there's quite bit into there, there's bit into it than just saying, oh, should be this speed or that speed. Uh, then there are some concerns about what speed should we have for Seventy-Sixth Avenue, especially with the construction on Wall Avenue? That traffic debris overs, and having more vehicles there, should that speed limit be looked at because of the increased amount of traffic, so um, Jim, if you could touch base on how those are set, definitely, I touch base it up or?
You did, yeah, and it just originated from um, some comments, or conversations I'd had with the resident along that corridor on the east, east side of the bridge. Um, concern for speed of traffic, because there's more traffic and then more bicycles. And then it just kind of segued into, I was thinking, I knew we were going to reroute it all, we were going to be rerouting, which would cause a large increase, and I just didn't know if it was worthy of a discussion in general.
So we talked specifically that area, but then holistically, speed limits, just so folks, if anybody can also ask questions about speed limits, or if there's other areas of concern, at least then we've talked about it, you know, we could at least look into it a little bit further, so.
Yeah.
Um, but Jim, if you could touch base on that.
So, speed limits are that, there's statutory speed limits, that's twenty-five dollars residential school district, fifty-five on rural highways, seventy-five on, on interstates. Um, I did find a nice little circular problem at HWA on speed limit basics, that way would like, I could put it on, give it forward on to constantly lines from earlier this afternoon, once I found it in preparation for tonight, so basically, it's dependent upon the eighty-fifth percentile of speeds, so uh, speed did most cars travel, sometimes the speed limit is set at five, five miles an hour increments, um, a lot of it's based on engineering judgment, engineering studies, et cetera, so not a real, it's uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is not only the factor um, for speed limits, but it also talks about determining appropriate speed limits, that's where we get the HNAK studies and often utilize supporting tools. MHWA has a tool, US limits, tools, what their program is. What they caution against here is common misconceptions, is that lowering the speed limit does not guarantee owners to drive slower. Speed limit, speed management, common measures may have to be implemented, we've talked about it on Wall Avenue, it's what, what should be done to kind of slow down if it's there with the lanes up, if it's speed tables, we have some speed tables on longer blocks. Help build arms edition, if one is a way to bring it up to, as the speed table there, just to keep people, you know, on the streets, actually, so um, I don't know, Jason, you want to touch on your county stuff, are you?
Sure, that, you need, Jason Benz, coming here, um, so Jim really hit a lot of it, uh, eighty-fifth percentile, so so, over the years, I've had, you know, whether it's Harwick, Kindred, a lot of communities, uh, where people, especially on the outskirts of town, as you transition from twenty-five miles an hour, one to fifty-five miles an hour. When's the appropriate time to change this? Look at traffic, that becomes the, the, the speed limit, um, on that eighty-fifth percentile. A lot of times our traffic data comes with what that average speed we do, that eighty-fifth percentile, and like Jim said, sometimes we assume that just lower it from thirty-five down to thirty or something like that, and people are going to drive that speed limit, but a lot of it, also as part of the, it's the geometry, so the highway, the visual aspect, you know, driving down the, this, hundred and seventeen right through, part of Horace, it has a lot different feel than a mile south past concrete acres, for someone that concrete acres, to say, I think it should be twenty-five miles an hour, just like here. People, you know, inherently aren't going to drive that because it, they've got a lot finer sight, sight, sight vision, driving. Uh, so those are all the things that, that, um, and, you know, if it's, if it's kind of tweaking it from forty to thirty-five miles an hour, that's usually something that would be done. Uh, but easier because it's a, it's a smaller adjustment, uh, but if it were from forty-five, or thirty-five down to thirty, uh, we'd probably want to do a inquiry and study and also look at what else is driving that long term, so, you know, is, um, there a long term plan to catch for? Uh, security path, something like that, but, um, but especially when we've got long stretch of road, if there's not a lot of access points or other things that visually are going to slow somebody down, taking something from forty-five down to thirty. Most people are still going to drive at that speed limit, um, and we see that in certain parts of our eight percentile is still ten miles on this speed limit. So it's a balance, because you don't want to be out of, out of sync with, you want to have things safe, but you want to be out of sync with, uh, what people are confident.
Jason, I was going to ask, I know earlier this spring, you guys did some traffic counts on the road, I don't know if you did them up on Seventy-Sixth going east at that point, or did you guys just do them on Seventeen and cut one hundred down?
Um, I, I believe we did them on uh, Seventy-Sixth as well, we haven't received all that data.
Okay.
Um, so last year, we did countywide pavement, on structure pavement testing, and well as uh, traffic counts, unfortunately, we don't get everything, so the area through Horace, meaning getting this ready for all the instructions that is.
Yeah.
Uh, we are expecting to get that data here, uh, maybe in the summer, and we'll have it in our, our, for our next year's plan, or however you plan, but uh, that's something that we can be, be all of work, it also got the pass, passing.
Right, I was just wondering about the trims, because that was kind of how we justified bringing down the speeds up there, you know, by Lions Park going south there to, from fifty-five to forty-five, because we were starting to get more traffic count.
And that's something where actually, uh, here, uh, what that is, you know, when you go from sixty-fourth avenue to Seventy-Sixth Avenue um, you know, within the last five years, all that new traffic, those new access points on the east side, there's just, there, there was enough change that while the road itself was the same, the geometry of the road, the shoulders, a lot of that is the same, but by adding those new conflict points with the, with the uh, new intersections coming in, and the increase in traffic volume, both going for solid on County Seventeen, but also coming in not intersecting, um, access points, all that can be focused in the prediction.
Right, and that's what I'm just thinking too, because I know traffic patterns are going to be screwy this year, because, you know, we're working up on sixty-four, so Seventy-Sixth is going to handle a lot more traffic, but um, I'll be curious to see what the traffic counts, you know, south of the roundabout here, I'm assuming they have increased substantially since last year.
Right, I know for sure, uh, Seventy-Sixth Avenue east of Allen, pretty busy, yes.
Yeah, it's a little bit more congested these days.
Substantially.
Yeah.
Do you have any concerns during construction of Wall, that the vast majority of Lost River will be redirected over to Seventy-Sixth? Is, is the corridor forty-five the whole way from eighty-first to Seventeenth?
It, it is, and you know, right now, um, yes, that forty-five mile an hour sign is kind of right on that the west side of the roundabout, and Seventy-Sixth Avenue Giants.
Okay, I didn't know if it, I mean, reached a fifty-five when it got a little further past the bridge.
Yeah, once you get, uh, the uh, uh, it's basically right at the, the shine.
Okay.
Uh, so that's you know, I, I look at it also as, I heard the comment, both bicycles, snowing through the pedestrians, well, um, there's not on the west side, obviously enough traffic, work, uh, the speed limit, but is it, east of the Shyne River Bridge, roundabout, that traffic pattern different or, um, you know, some cases by adding the surety used passes and paths that give access to people up and down, and by twenty-seventeen, are east, are we seeing more kids from that on those areas, or bicycles, using the shoulder to get from those areas, this west of the, of the, of the sharing pass, that's something that.
Questions on the studies that um, your group performed shortly after the construction of Seventy-Sixth Avenue, was that predominantly on Seventy-Sixth Avenue east of the roundabout? Or did it include Seventy-Sixth Avenue west of the roundabout?
That was just east, I, we haven't changed the uh, speed limit, I think it's last year, I don't know, but I think at least. Been with the county for twenty-three years, and I think it's been consistently been thirty-five, and then but before, I think went to fifty-five, when he went, got past the Shyne River, uh, because of his travel from there.
Right.
Basically, kind of on outskirts of town, but now that there's, so we push that further, uh.
That forty-five mile an hour zone goes all the way on the pavement out to the diversion, and then it turns to fifty-five.
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Jason, thank you for your.
Were we going to talk about Wall Avenue too then, now Brenton, or when did you want to talk about it?
Yeah, we could talk about speed limits, so.
I just, I just wasn't sure where on the agenda you wanted, when, when we chatted about it, I wasn't sure. I'm fine wherever.
We're talking overall speed limit, double check, uh.
We'll put it on.
Talk about it now.
Yeah, go ahead, do it now.
Yeah. So, I think that was more where we're talking, the traffic control.
Yeah.
Earlier, but uh, constant information, so, traffic control, what are we doing for traffic control in regards to Wall Avenue? Um, can anything be done? A signage? From the perspective I had, there was really a signage and enforcement, or probably mechanism, but Jim, if you could elaborate a little bit more on that, if there's anything else that can be done. Uh, one idea that I could discuss in constant management, and I've talked with our staff currently is, do we have like those, it's to be them as signs that light up? The last you're going, dynamic speeds, so, yep, but if you could touch base on the traffic.
So right now, there's no real calibrators in the Wall Avenue project, the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Um, most cities find that the best way to get through control the twenty-five miles an hour just enforcement. Some cities, they're putting a flag on a speed limit sign. Got it? Hey, but um, speed tables are typically kind of a pain in the rear and a thump thump, especially in your residential area, you know, um, they're not really that recommended, I don't know what that kind of functions as a collector, it's kind of a hybrid, because it goes right along, first houses, not just straight through the street, which also leads to the speed enforcement on there, you know, driving down the hour on the, like that, but um, like I said, we talked on a staff level, I guess the signs are probably there, you guys see a lot of those that work on some of state highways where through the shows and speed, people, they're speed up to see how fast they'll go, or slow down, and then you already have them to slow down. Guys, from the D O P on the motion, just made, uh, as far as like traditionally ten miles an hour over the speed limit, they shut off to see, to see how fast it'll register, but um, we didn't do a lot of ball boats, or we didn't do any ball boats on this one, just for maintenance sake, following that type of plus we didn't have a lot of space, if there's parking lanes, use a ball boat, there's, I think there's ball boats in downtown with Fargo, there's ball boats in downtown Fargo, just. The bringing of the pedestrian facilities closer to the traveling line, there may be clean with Zara.
I guess like it's gonna be really hard for law enforcement to be sitting there anyways, because there's nowhere for them to sit. Really?
I I have a hard time believing that we can citation or surveil our way out of the, what I know are gonna be the traffic issues on that road. And I I would hate to see our valuable officer time be be spent extraordinarily in that space. I mean, I think we all agree that there are gonna be traffic issues there. When the project is all done, it's gonna be almost a mile of of smooth paved road uh, with no ability to slow the traffic down. And I'm glad that you acknowledge that. It's not a typical, I don't know if we're calling it a minor arterial or a collector.
It's kind of all it's be honest.
Yeah. And I'm glad you recognize it's really not a, it's not a standard. It's not how we would build a collector or an arterial today. I mean, we have multiple residents are gonna be that have their driveways adjoining the road. They're gonna be backing out onto the road and we have a bus stop right by the bridge too. I mean, I don't I mean, I recognize that there's disadvantages to other, to maybe some traffic calming uh, measures or maybe even stop signs, but I mean, we have to we have to take that road as we find it and the large majority of the road is 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 highly residential, right in people's front yards. I had some other notes here. I mean, I just, I just think I think it's appropriate in this place to make exceptions or special accommodations for the road because it's a special road. It doesn't really fit a specific definition of of any of our road and it's very unique to our city. I have great concerns about safety issues on the road with our residents backing out onto it, coming out onto it, children getting on the bus by by the bridge. I I think I would like to see us look at, I recognize there's disadvantages to speed tables. Um, but I I would like to look at some stop, at least a stop, at least a stop sign at the Lost River memory lane intersection. I I recognize that you said you didn't want traffic stopping on the bridge. Otherwise, I'd say a stop sign there and some speed tables along the road because honestly, for the safety of the residents, I mean, it's, we already have speed issues. It's not even smooth yet. It's gonna be an entire mile stretch with nothing to slow people down, but a sign. I I I'm curious what the rest of you think about what about while
Is um, speed monitored by camera allowed in North Dakota? Like they do in other states, would you say Washington, D C is huge for it?
I don't know, but I doubt it because I have not seen it in
Right, I haven't seen it. Do you know, Mr. Benson?
To my knowledge, you've not seen any kind of cameras in the first uh, that's some of the issues that the city of West or city of Fargo assuming you knew, but this speeding and gray racing.
Yep.
Something that was in the legislative fashion that gets discussed, but can't uh, can't use. You can use it to collect information, but not
Okay.
What would we do like on a, on a on a typical residential road? I mean, we see stop signs every, every few blocks to control traffic on a residential road. It is very much a hybrid road. I think our residents that live along that road deserve to have some safety built into trying to slow the speed of the traffic.
Think stop signs at Cheyenne? Beyond the east side or at Thue?
My my only, my only, I mean, I I'm not the expert. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Um, my initial thought was um, at least Lost River Memory Lane. May maybe Thue and maybe Thue and uh, and Wall too. I recognize we, we don't want traffic stopping on the bridge, you said. Because that four-way stop, I know it's not directly a four-way area. It's a little bit of an odd intersection, but just, just in a way to provide some safety and to slow traffic down because I I I mean, I bet I can guarantee we already have speeding issues on that road. It it's gonna increase exponentially.
But my concern with that is starting and stopping. We all, there's more going on on west of Lost River West Edition. A lot of material delivery, mixed drugs.
Yeah.
Material act. So starting and stopping of semis.
You mean on the bridge?
No, on that corridor or something. Well, on that road, I want semis.
Well, I know, but do do we want high speeds? Do we want the excess speeds on the road? For that reason, we wouldn't, we wouldn't look at high traffic speeds because we don't want semi-stopping on the road.
I'm just saying, starting, stopping.
Oh, this the does beat up the road. It's it's concrete. It's yeah, it's it's
I guess what I'd say right now, we could probably have some more discussion on this um, too, but anyone who want to park or stop traffic on the bridge? You know, but I don't know if stopping the traffic on
Isn't there like removable like speed tables or something that you can like?
Yeah.
Yeah. Isn't there something like that you can utilize? And then obviously, when snow flies, that'd be a different story. You know what I mean? Isn't there something like that that we could look into? I mean, I don't know if it's feasible, but
But that would be That'd be summertime only, then it wouldn't be a winter event.
Yeah, but I mean, most people I feel in the winter are gonna be a little more cautious, aren't they, with snow and I don't
Yeah, it's a dry road. I don't know if it will.
I'm just saying.
And I know West Fargo has a traffic calming evaluation process. I mean, I'm sure you're aware of it. I was researching it. To look at different issues on the roads. I I'm just worried that we're, we're gonna have, I'm just worried we're gonna have even more of a problem on the, I know we are than we already have.
The only complaint I don't see us getting is the dust one.
Well, that one will go away. Yes.
The speed's causing dust. Not all the speed, the speeds.
And noise.
Restating.
Yeah.
All right. Like I said, I think we can can talk more about that too. Jim, if you want to just look at that a little bit and just see what some potentials there. All right. Anything else on that downtown?
Thank you.
Okay, move on to eleven. Jim, you got that one?
Yes, number eleven is change order number one for Water Street Approved District twenty-two twenty-eight, sixty-sixth Street. Uh, this is for the addition of six hundred and fifty-seven linear feet of private defense on the north side of the element addition between element and Southfield Farm Six. This is just a uh, increase in quantity, bid price didn't change any. Some additional six hundred and fifty-seven linear feet at seventy-two dollars per foot, or twenty-seven dollars. Seven thousand dollars.
So the contingency can probably handle some of that. Okay. Okay. Any questions on this? Look for a motion to accept the change order.
I'll make a motion to accept the change order.
Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff makes a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next one, Jim, you got that one?
Now we'll get to this is a water sewer storm street approved in twenty-two-two-nine, sixty-third Street. So this one, the things will open on Tuesday night, see bits of seven contractors to go underground, K V H for improvement. Here are first, she all finished, Arnold Larson and R and R excavating. Uh, this one, the parallel emitter, and the emitter was to go underground with a bid of three million, five hundred ninety-six thousand, one dollars and six cents. On the engineer's exit, it was four million, six, three thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So a little bit closer from the height it was uh, R and R, it's gonna be at four which one point nine billion dollars. So to go down there, it has completed projects for the city in the past. Well, they have submitted their information for the policy. It is scheduled, so it'll start in August. This one has a completion date of next year. If the utilities in this year let it go through a freeze thaw, then put the road on top of it next year. So um, those who don't know sixty-third Street, this project starts basically on southeast, southeast corner of the high school and continues down to Wall Avenue. Finishes off that corridor. Right now, sixty-third Street starts seventy-sixth. That ends close to eighty-second Avenue, just a couple of blocks out there. The Lake New Edition just completes that corridor and also um, open the area for some Creek second, which is under construction right now. So.
This is gonna be an extremely helpful project when it comes to alleviating some of the traffic flow in the future that will be held on Seventeen and Wall Avenue. I know we've had a lot of requests for additional outputs north and I'm pretty thrilled with the results of this one. We're seeing some pricing that's coming in pretty comfortable. I have no issues. Does anyone else have an issue? I will make the motion to approve and award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, in this case Dakota Underground, for the sixty-third Street project.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we got it. Yeah, we made a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jim, get the next one.
Next thing we have is water sewer storm street approved District twenty-two-one-five. Change order number one, which decreases the contract length by two hundred dollars to eighty dollars and sixty cents. This project was good, the entire project was to be finished created. These are the costs of this project and the special assessments the developer felt that the home builders, once they get their estimation for their basements, that can fill in their own lots. So this project, he wanted to reduce, wanted to reduce the uh, on fill on the lots and just build up the right of way and the utility easement. Anything he said to try and get the specials a little bit more attainable right now. These are relatively larger lots, seventy foot front side, I believe. So he's um, trying to look at ways of reducing the cost and this is kind of the only way
Any questions?
I I just want to make sure I understand. So instead of filling
Instead of doing the lots where the holes are the problem that the developers have with that is that if you create the entire site, you come in to dig a basement, all stuff, all the ground offsite. So by digging the basements, leaving the lots alone, some of that can be onsite if a fall of it and the bulk of this individual homeowner would have to bring in.
Who is responsible? And I guess I need some clarification on this because I have a situation in my neighborhood where some of the lots were left alone and it was left up to the homeowner to bring them up and it never happened. And so we have drainage issues. So
This is set with base, the finished floor elevation, thirty inches above the, above the curb. For those lots, they're graded to drain, but the developer has to pay down the responsibility. This isn't any different than what they're doing in some of the lots.
Okay.
Forced the perimeter.
So they're taking this cost on themselves instead of farming it up. How do we guarantee that it gets done?
Yep, that's what I said, same. How do we enforce, how do we enforce that?
There are threats through storm sewer. Your issue was standing water or is it up behind up?
My concern is the exact concern that my neighborhood went through and several other neighborhoods have dealt with.
Those that are secure.
Right.
Big inches above curves.
Right. Case, I want to make sure that if we allow the developer to do this, who is responsible for the
In the first site, I look at Rivers End right now is my prime example.
Right.
Yeah, the difference in how much fill one person brought in versus another and just the whole neighborhood being different, exactly.
Rivers Edge is probably not unique there.
True, but but each resident was left to bring in their own as they stop bed. And somebody has a yard that is four feet higher than the neighbors and vice versa. How do we enforce some sort of a smooth slope?
Sends Rivers Edge, sends the although raise plans gotten to be more nice and their contractors are provided for elevations on
But it's gonna be the city.
City's still gonna have
Expect.
Part of the building.
Got, okay. Just want to make sure that's clear.
No, just remember too, the Rivers Edge one was not in the city when they, but then I don't
That's a valid point.
Different elevations.
Right, but I mean, be aware of that too. So. Okay, any other questions?
So are inspectors that, like, they're
Basically, they would need to comply with the elevation.
Yep.
So they review the, they're specified on the
That's something that they normally inspect anyways.
It's, yeah. And if something gets provided at the level they should be ready to fly to center. No, they could still I don't think that, I don't know if that addresses the entire grading of the lot. They should, they'll always beat the proper Yeah, they have to meet the property quarters, but
That's pretty much the whole lot.
So they have to meet property quarters and elevation, they all again, it has certain elevation, so the start of the house has to be at a certain point. So much about the Vice City Safe Orders, thirty inches above top curve. Western area where the uh, floods get through that base flood elevation in case there that's usually higher than the street.
Okay, any other questions? To accept the change order then.
I'll motion to accept the change order on to twenty twenty-one dash five district.
Okay, Stephanie made a motion. Can I do a second? Get a second on that?
Is open to giving it a shot and keeping an eye on it, you know?
That's what I'm like.
I mean, I'm what I've seen and gone through here.
It is nerve wracking.
But I I I have, we have been told that there are some controls in place now that weren't in place back at the time that some of these other issues happened, so.
And I know they were brought in a lot of filler ready for airwood.
Buy it weekly. I know you drive by it almost daily. So I mean, at this point in time, I'm gonna say we voiced our concerns about drainage. We're gonna keep an eye on it. Please let the the appropriate departments of the city know that we are keeping track of this one. We want to make sure that this is right.
And I guess I should say a motion because of the additional parameters that are in place now.
Yeah, make a second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. From Kerry. Shared use path, Jim.
All right. So the city was fortunate enough to receive about five hundred and ninety thousand, not five hundred, four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in federal grants for shared use path pay is five. I'll ask for baseball, then because four entity funds. So five is the new four. But it's still five, other two of them. So we skipped four. You're confused? So stab. So we're referring to it as third avenue north to eighty-first avenue.
Okay, thank you.
So this is starts uh, by Casey's, it continues up to eighty-first avenue on the east side of County Road Seventeen.
Okay, east side.
East side.
So happy.
To mirror what's on the west.
Our states can get to Dairy Queen.
So with this grant, there's eighty percent federal, twenty percent local. It is administered by the D O T. The D O T sets the project schedule, sets the bid dates. So we need to set the bid date for this project, which in turn starts everything else to get the environmental documents to the P S E, supply us middle, that everything. So typically, we've been these projects and people putting them in a and uh, the meters have been able to construct the projects. This year, we haven't had any trouble with that. Uh, the only bug I would say is that we had to sooner completion date, I want to look at it in August and this next last one we did in September is too soon to get to get it constructed. So um, what I'm asking for you to enter is a recommendation to the a bit of bid opening
No, please.
April
Okay.
Apologize when you're dealing with the federal fiscal years, state year and in our years, it gets really confusing really quickly. So we have on the April twenty twenty-four gives us a lot of time to that would be about the middle of the federal fiscal year. See us spending that money here on it.
Make that motion.
If makes a motion to set the bid at April twenty twenty-four?
Yep.
All right, can I get a second on that?
But, sorry.
Sarah does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Everybody? But the approval of the engineering agreement service, I suppose you want to get paid for this, huh, Jim?
We do, and this is the same agreement we use for phase three. So it's been updated to the budget cost.
Okay, any questions? They don't look for a motion to accept.
The approval.
Services.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second? Jeff makes a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Nice, thank you. Nice, thank you. Alright, we're granted, it's good.
We got the next one.
Okay, next one here is. Follow up from last council meeting, just earlier that day, last council meeting, this end council. Uh, copy of our most recent credit opinion from Moody's. Um. We are now be a three. For that credit opinion, but I know a council asked if we could discuss it at just council meeting. Um, I do have Colliers on the line, so uh Cory, if you can make sure they could be able to talk. Hear them just trying to bottom.
Can you guys hear us? Okay.
I've got you Cory, this is Mike.
Here we go, thank you.
So we have uh Craig Heiss, Mike Mantrim, John Lundy, Colliers available. Can't really answer any questions that you may have about the credit opinion. Um. Also, my man trim, I have a very conversation. About this and.
We did.
So high level, what's going on here? What's interesting with our. Credit opinion for this one? If you look at the rating methodology and scorecard factors that they have. Uh, say it's strictly rated B, A rated, A, B, A. Don't have any B A threes at all on there. Uh, in talking to Colliers earlier even today. And there's probably national trends that influence that. Um, also. Uh. Moody's a comment for temp bond package that we're going through that process right now, bonding for, even though they gave their ratings before that. And they're not getting this credit for. The permanent financing that we're going to be doing here. Later this year. Uh, so we thought that was interesting. We raised concerns or questions to Moody's about it. However, when Moody's sets their. Rating. They said it. And you really can't change. Change them on that. It's not really an argument. It's more just making sure you try to understand where they're coming from. Uh, but maybe it's Craig, Mike or John, they could expand on the. Per, further detail, if you had any questions on it. Um. Uh, one, one last note I'd like to point out is one comparison that I use is. Thing is like for your own personal finances, when you come to like the credit scores. If you have a credit score, a lot of people do. When you go and make a big purchase, your credit score drops. Over time, as you're making payments back. You know, you take a loan out, you go buy a car. You're paying off your loan. Your credit circle's back up. And for cities, a Moody's credit rating is. When we're talking really high level. Kind of like a credit score. Um, when we go buy money, we are doing other things. Our rating may stay the same, but they drop a little bit, but as we show payment towards definitive bonds. So our special assessment projects, when they start seeing those definitive special assessments going out. Um, and they see that on our audit. That helps us. That helps us because there's, we're showing that. Those funds are getting paid back through the special assessment. Colliers could explain it better than I can there. I know that. Um. We're at that lag point where we haven't had a lot of those definitive bonds. Re-treat picker have an audited repayment stage yet. So. That's something I actually learned about today. So. Uh, across my nation, I found that out today even. So um, knowing more about this, but. Uh, like I said, Colliers can answer any questions that you have, or I could try to answer them. And I just wanted to have this just be a straight up. You know, discussion if you have any questions for them. And for the Colliers guys, if you guys want to expand anything that I missed or. That comes to your mind. Feel free chime in.
Mike, John, if you guys got anything you want to add to that, what Brent was talking about?
Uh, I would say, so this is Craig, first of all, uh, pleasure to speak with everyone. We've been working with the city for a number of years now. Um, I, I would say Brent, you are correct. Basically, the credit report is essentially a. Um, in the moment, credit score of the city. It can go up, it can go down, it reflects. In-place activities of the city. Um, the credit report overall reads pretty well, quite honestly. Um, the city gets a lot of good scores. The challenge that the rating agency has when they're looking at cities that are undergoing exponential growth, which the city of Horace is. They compare it to. Very static rating criteria that every city across the country is compared to. They look at it almost in a vacuum. They are oftentimes using dated information such as population and or historical financials. That may not capture current valuation, real-time population and other, but that's the criteria. They have to have it. Very black and white. Um, that's just their process. Um, in the terms of cities that go through expansive growth. You're financing a lot of public infrastructure and you're doing so as a commission, as a city. Trying to bring infrastructure into the city to meet growing needs. Um, to care for existing residents, new residents. Those are hard decisions. It's a big job. In the case of refunding improvement bonds or special assessment bonds. The challenge is there is a lag and that's not different than any other construction type project. So the, the biggest implication is when you borrow for the construction phase financing. Although you capitalize the interest, so you have funds to pay the debt service. Uh, while the temporary issue is outstanding. The rating agency looks at the debt obligation as a liability. So on the balance sheet, it's a liability, something that has to be repaid. Um, they don't um give a whole lot of credit for the capitalized interest as an asset. To offset that debt service, because what they want to see down the road are the revenues. And that's what Brent was talking about. They want to see the temporary issues um ultimately go into the long-term definitive process. So they can start to offset long-term liabilities tied to that borrowing or that debt instrument. By the corresponding special assessment revenues that would start to show up in your balance sheet. So. When you're going through such expansive, fast growth in a short period. The debt starts to accumulate quicker than the revenues. Start to populate on your financial statements to offset the corresponding debt service tied to the debt. So. Basically, the report, if you read it, the implication of the recent borrowings are saying, hey, you have a lot of construction debt outstanding. Uh, as revenues would catch up and they populate financials would be a period in time in which the rating agency would love to potentially. Upgrade or improve the current writing, rating for the city debt. So um. What you do in these instances, when you elect to complete these projects. Uh, ultimately, the goal should be if, if, you know, for the credit rating. Um, when it's time to pay off the construction loan with the long-term definitive issues. That should benefit the city. Um, I would also say that. Don't take these ratings personally. Um, it's a means by which the city is able to. Attract a larger pool of investors. Um, which ultimately drives your cost of capital down. So despite a one-notch downgrade, your investment grade rated. Um, you're still attracting a large pool of investors. And investors understand that cities will go through positive outlooks, negative outlooks, stable outlooks, they'll go up, they'll go down, they'll move around. Um, the story of the city hasn't changed from the first time that we went to the rating agency and the fact that. There are large borrowings that are being taken on for the purposes of helping the public, or I should say private sector and public sector. Expand to meet the needs of the community, but it shouldn't be taken personally. Uh, the city, other processes put in place. The reserve policies, uh, the management, the oversight of it, the long-term plans, the capital improvement budgets. Have all been very well received. The audit work shows well. So. It's a, it's a result of just the current time. Um. It's on a macro level and they're taking into consideration a lot of national economic trends. And they don't focus solely on the strength of your local economy, the community and the growth that you're going under. Um, they, they look at it more in a vacuum. So um, this can all be overcome. We see in the next couple of years as the special assessments start to come on the books to offset long-term debt service. The rating agency will review this. They monitor you guys every year with or without a, an issue. And um, you know, we expect that in the future, things will move around.
Yeah. Thanks Craig. Anybody have any? Questions they want to ask?
John or Craig?
Um, I do, I do have a couple of questions. Um, that you touched on. You know, we had had that opinion in March, I think, and then they reissued another one in May. Was that a result of our? The temp bond that we had just. Uh, secured and do you think that, that downgrading impacted our interest rates uh hopes at all? In that last temp bond funding, we talked about, I think at the last meeting.
So uh, I think a couple of things went into play. So. It's not just the fact that you're borrowing on a temporary basis again. I think what the rating agency is doing is. Um. Number one, nationally, development projects have been under a lot of pressure. So that is a qualitative factor that went into this. Uh, number two. You have temp issues outstanding from two thousand twenty-two, you have a two thousand twenty-two A and a two thousand twenty-two B. And now you have the two thousand twenty-three B issue. Um. It's simply a product of as the construction loan debt. Accumulates until the revenues attached to the definitive issues start to show up in your financial statements. At this point in time, in terms of the criteria, based on what they access for data for city population evaluation. Which some of that information is candidly dated. That criteria um or those figures based upon the criteria that they compare it to. Triggered the downgrade. What does a downgrade mean in terms of interest rates? A one-notch downgrade isn't a one percent movement in interest rate. It could be basis points. It could be fifteen to twenty basis points or ten basis points. We'll find out more discovery next week. But a one-notch movement in rating, just like a negative outlook versus positive outlook. Isn't fifty basis points to a hundred basis points or two hundred basis points. It's basis points. And it, it'll come down to everything from um. The city's story. That accompanies the rating to the pricing, to alternative investments, to where um. Fast reserves could earn interest rates. It's, it's a price, credit, quality analysis every given week that accounts go through.
And I know you touched a little bit about. You know, as, as we. Segue to more permanent bonding that that will assist, but we, we are also going to continue to have a lot of. Temp bonding as we continue to move forward in the process. I mean, how, how do you think that flows together? We're still going to have a lot of mount, a lot of amount of special assessment desk, debt that will be temp bonding. How is that going to flow together, do you think, over time? To affect our interest rates?
So overall interest rates.
Or our credit, or our credit rating too, I guess.
Yeah, so without. And, and we talked about this with city staff today. Without sort of building out a timeline of when all of the temporary issues are anticipated. So. When the construction is going to be done, when the cost will be known, when they'll be certified, when the definitive issue will be in. Uh, when the special assessment revenues will start to show up on the financial statements. It's, it's not. Black and white to be able to determine how that will impact. I think both the rating agency and investors and us and others know that the borrowing will likely continue. So it's just something that when you go to market or when you're looking to go to market. We can have conversations with the rating agency. We'll want to see where you're at with the revenue collections for other definitive long-term issues. What the size of the construction loans are, where the valuation figures show up each year from the county. Um, some of the population statistics, both the city has, what the rating agency looks at, what the census is reporting. What your overall financial statements look like, where the reserve balances fall, what your capital improvement budget is. What the long-term outlook for the city administration and commission is. Um. There's a lot of variables. Um, we have to take every issue into consideration. If you issued zero bonds or. Pick a number, the rating agency, like I said, they will be mo- uh, monitoring. The city credit each year and providing updates. In terms of interest rates, um. That's a great question. We just came off a period when there was concern of the debt ceiling not being raised, which would have made the issue that we're in the market with right now. Um. Uh, let's just say, it would be sitting on the sidelines along with every other borrowing and lending tool out there. Um. Interest rates ebb and flow. Um. In the current market, I think a movement in the overall rating is nominal. And if it's fifteen or twenty-five basis points, I would suspect that's probably the impact. Of the downgrade.
Thank you.
Craig, it would probably be fair to say that we've gotten some pretty good interest rates though with where we're going and what we've been doing. As far as, you know, when we go and try and sell these bonds, correct?
Absolutely. You have a large following of investors. Um, we have interests from east to west coast, north, south. Um, very, very large institutions from Wall Street to California. We have a large following of middle markets. Everyone from banks, we even have high net, net worth individuals. So you have a large cast of characters. Um, or, or audience, I should say, not cast of characters. Who follow the issue, who understand the story, who find it candidly a little exciting. Um, they see it as a great investment opportunity. Um. We haven't had people shy away from the issue and we anticipate we'll have the same this round and, and overall your cost of borrowing. Um, in terms of. Timing the market overall to manage this amount of borrowing. You couldn't have done it any more perfect, especially over the last three years. So uh, that's been great. And even today, rates overall. I know people think rates are high. They're higher, but they're back to kind of more normalized levels. So um. In terms of the period that you've taken on the debt, timing has been quite good.
Good. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it.
Thanks Craig.
Our pleasure.
John, looking forward to seeing you guys come up here sometime again, Mike.
Very soon.
Yeah.
We will Cory.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye guys.
See ya.
Great. Number sixteen, who wants that one? Brent, you want to lead in with it?
Hey, this one is, there's two, also there to know, it's, that's familiar, you're, you're a few weeks ago, all. Uh, stockpiles that are. In residential developments, uh, where you may see a stockpile. On as a single lot or on two lots and concerns with that dirt. Uh. Boy, it's, it stays there or should even be there. And we started looking at that stat level, but uh, talking with Crossmerch goes, have a conversation about dirt stockpiles in the city. Council has any concerns about that. Um, the main just of the concern, Jeff, please correct me or please expand on it, what is in regards to. If. We have a stockpile of dirt happening under residential lot. And. Down the road. That stockpile stays and the developer just lets that lot people. Now we have a stockpile of dirt staying there and a lot stuck. Sitting. But.
Right, so.
That was my understanding.
So currently we have down in the south end of town, we have. Uh, development project that was completed, uh, went from temporary bonding to permanent bonding. All the lots were currently set. Um, right now we have a stockpile of dirt that's approximately three stories tall on one lot. Um, it would take probably a week worth of. Dump trucks getting all that dirt out of there. Um, if for whatever reason that developer let that lot go and went in default. And the city is stuck with it, we are probably stuck with that cost of. Somehow moving that lot. And trying to remove the dirt somewhere. Obviously, yes, you could probably be pointing off the dirt, but. It's the whole cost of trying to get rid of it. You can't immediately move the lot is what I'm getting at. So um, I know we have ordinances for. People that let their yards go. Um, I don't see how this is any. Different in a broad. Uh, view of things. Where a developer has come in or. An excavation company has come in and just used that to temporarily hold dirt or temporarily hold dirt. Um. For whatever reason, you know, you can come up with a, a ton of different reasons as to why they did it. Uh, but right now you have a. Very large pile of dirt out there. And I see a couple of residents have complained. Um. I don't believe they asked for permission to put that out there. I don't know if they even need permission to. Um, it was done at the same time that this. Uh. Builder. Cut into a city street to fix an issue without permission as well. I don't think that is actually fixed as of yet. I haven't gone out there to look this week, but. They still have it as gravel, I believe. Okay? Um. What I'm worried about is we have. Developers or builders doing whatever they want. Without. Notifying the, uh, the city. That is my fear right now. And you know, how long you let it go? How many others are going to do the same exact thing? So. I'm just looking for discussion.
Jeff, I uh appreciated you reaching out.
Jeff, I appreciated you reaching out to me over the weekend on this topic. And I think the key thing that we need to look at in this discussion is timing. Nobody up here is going to get too excited about a pile of dirt here, pile of dirt there during construction, right? We get it. We know you guys got to do what you got to do to build houses and do what you need to do. It is the timing of this particular issue, and I've been down there, so I know how big this pile is, that is a concern. Because this project's been turned over from temporary to permanent. People are living out there and it's obstructing their view. It's a major issue if we did ever have a problem with the city. So this particular one, I'm going to say, yeah, I I agree with you. I think that we need to be a little more careful about what we allow after developments have been turned over. It just made, it makes for a terrible eyesore. It it's.
And how long does it sit there?
Well, and that's exactly it, you know, the the developer no longer really has any incentive to move that dirt. They have no incentive to move that lot. And does that affect us as a city? You bet it does. So during the temporary timing, during the construction phases, before everybody's moving in, you bet I get it, right? After the fact, get that crap out of there. Let these people enjoy living in a nice neighborhood. That's how I feel.
Okay, so I don't know if there's much that we can do at this juncture, Jim, or.
We have a dumping and excavation nuisance.
Right.
And it sets a year timeline. There's additional bonding mechanism on that as well that they end up paying in the event that they're not moving their stuff together. Uh, Lucas and I were talking a little bit about today and I've been working talking to Joel about it, uh, potential areas. If we needed to to kind of ironclad that ordinance up a little bit, just to help staff gain compliance before it went into the legal situation. Um, from that, you know, adjusting the time limit of a permit that they would have to get. Because right now it's a year that they could work with that permit down to like ninety days to get more into the lines of the actual home starting process. And then when we get from that temporary to solid, maybe that's something to look at. So I don't know if this is something that maybe it's a direction from council for staff to just take a look at and revamp this ordinance. So it's going to work better for us when we're trying to gain compliance and see if there's any kind of, you know, weak areas that we could beef up a little bit. And then we come back to you with an alternative. Okay, this is what we're going to start forcing now.
Yeah. So has anybody from the city reached out to either, I won't name names, either the builder or the excavation company that put all this there to ask why? And when did they get on?
That I've been perfectly.
Okay, so it 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 happened during the time when there was load restrictions in the spring. Um, which brings me to my question of how to properly word this, uh, legality of them using their own development to get around load restrictions. Since they've they've built the road, the road is complete. Like I said, we went from temporary to permanent. The development was allowed to have certificate of occupancy for all those lots. And they're driving supposedly within that, those city streets that they build to avoid load restrictions, even though they brought a lot of dirt from outside of that development into it. Um, I'd like to know why it was piled up, uh, if they're planning to use that dirt for the second, third phase, I believe is what they called it now. Um, they've told, I believe, me twice, and I don't know how many times you, Sarah. You were in one of the meetings with me, that they have all the fill they need. So if they've said that at least twice to me and at least once to you, and Brent, you were in on.
Yeah.
At least three of those meetings.
Yep.
Why are they stockpiling dirt down there? If they don't need anymore and they have said it multiple times, they need no more dirt. They have met the requirements for FEMA elevation. Why are they stockpiling that much dirt?
And I guess I think you can speculate all day long, but I think we need to look forward to how do we adjust the ordinance? How do we enforce it? And what can we do with this particular situation? I I don't know how long that pile has been there, do you?
I do, exactly.
How long?
It's grown.
I've sent him pictures.
Well, it's it's grown throughout really the last six months, I would say, or even probably three months.
And there there might be a reason, but let's get to the bottom of it.
Well, let's find out then. I mean, what can we do at this juncture? So I think that's that's the first part of this investigation. And then we can probably see what we want to do for future. But for now, we need to react to this to figure out what we can do with what we currently have on the book.
We intend it.
Right, that's what it means. So we we have a mechanism.
Is there necessary to the ordinance to me?
I think we should have a conversation.
Situation.
You know, I'm I'm that person that believes that you should walk the twenty steps across the street and have a conversation with someone before you start sending nasty letters, right? So I I think that we should call them and just notify them that there's some concern and see what their responses and what they're planning to do with it. And that's nicely say, you know, we'd really like to get this moved and set a timeframe on within reason. Once we've done that, I think we have reason to go.
Right.
To the next steps.
And I agree, we should have a conversation first.
That may or may not include a nuisance letter. I don't know what the next steps would be. We can, we can talk about that at the time.
Right. Let's let's see where the initial conversation goes first.
Did you guys want to put the ordinance on?
No, I'd like. We can direct staff to review.
Sure.
Current ones, see if there's anything.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Like, we wanted to look at the current ordinance and see if there was any.
I think.
From initial staff, we are looking at trying to make it a little more black and white, cut and dry.
Yeah, I think we should update it.
What we'll do from the staff side is we'll look at that. Work with our our staff will work through that and just see if there's any other concerns that basically are uh, hitups that we may have with it. Um, my understanding with this stockpile, I can't remember, uh, Jeff, if it was through our conversations or with our staff about the load restrictions, but I remember that conversation of folks trying to avoid load restrictions, which I don't know why they would bring dirt in, avoid load restrictions to bring it out. But agreed, um, anyways, we'll, we'll have a conversation with them and we'll review the ordinance from the staff side and then we have regularly changes to it. For you, so try and make it more clear. And perhaps there's a way that we can go for load restriction conversation too, uh, if they're trying to stockpile just to avoid that. Yeah, we have ideas internally.
And if they're stockpiling it for phase two or phase three, just remind them, you said you had all the dirt you need. What is going on?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's what they were referencing when they said they had all the dirt they needed. I don't know.
That is not already there, but I agree. I agree with you.
I'm kind of going, what the heck?
I also want to make sure that developers can't just do whatever they want without, don't find the seat, like cutting a hole in a road. With anybody's knowledge. I mean, at some point, we got to reel it in. So.
Agreed.
Can we make sure we call like this week?
Right. Anything else on that?
Nope.
All right, let's go to the next. Let's go to seventeen. Casey, you got that one?
So I just be that little patient, um, Russell Sarr has submitted his resignation to planning zoning commission that was effective May twenty-fourth. Uh, which he's been moving out of the city. In addition to that, there was a second seat that's remained unfilled for the planning and zoning commission for a number of years. Um, and as a result of vacancies, we began to the process of seeking applicants to fill both of those seats on March tenth of two thousand twenty-three. I am told we received four applications, which were reviewed by myself, Mayor Peterson, take a look at them, council member Furklin took a look at them. Planning and zoning commission chair, Ian Bean took a look at them, as well as city administrator. Um, and following review those applications, Chad Chalmers and Ron Erickson were selected as the top choices for everyone that had taken a look at those. Uh, the planning zone commissions and advisory board that most frequently is involved in the technical group development as relates to the current city's current land use ordinance. And I think in everyone's opinion, both Mr. Chalmers and Mr. Erickson have past experiences that would greatly benefit that board as we move into the the future. Uh, Mr. Chalmers brings experience as a former joint enforcement officer for the city of Minot, as well as a member of Minot's downtown business and professional association board of directors, as well as the secretary uh, for the city of Tioga's chamber of commerce. And Mr. Erickson's been a longtime resident, uh, who's been involved in city processes previously. Uh, he was most recently part of the economic development committee with the city. Um, in addition, with his career of thirty plus years, experience in organizational administration, um, which includes a lot of decision making and sticking to those. So both were impressive and and I'm I'm happy to make a recommendation that staff recommends. Uh, the mayor appoint Chad Chalmers and Ron Erickson as members of the planning and zoning commission. And then following that would be a confirmation of that appointment by the city council.
Okay. You guys want to stand up and acknowledge? Here he is. Ron, here you are. Okay. Do anybody have any questions for these two gentlemen? I think they're more than qualified for this. I appreciate you guys stepping up to be nominated too, so.
I have no problems, Chase, uh, said cheering for the U and D fighting off.
Nothing wrong with that. I'm in.
It looks like the city would be extremely fortunate to have the both of you. That's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, really wonderful.
We need as much help as we can get, just a good help, involved people. Thank you.
So then with that, I'm going to look for a motion to accept these two gentlemen as, uh, appointments to the planning commission.
The head of planning.
Me, he makes a motion. Can I get a second? Sarah, it is a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next one. Brenton, you got that?
Yeah, the next one here is regards to headquarters HQ liquor license application. Yes, back at you again. The reason why is ownership changed. So being that there's change in ownership, they have to apply for that liquor license. Uh, like places just get handed over. It's not change ownership. So, uh, no issues with the ownership for this. Uh, the owner of, new owner of headquarters owns two other bars, bar down and of West.
Have they had any violations?
I haven't heard of any issues.
So I talked to the city of West Harding, and then not having issues with them.
Thank you.
So.
Excellent.
Anyways, liquor licenses back at you. We have a public hearing for tonight. That was noticed in the paper, worked with them to get that posted in the paper there. So that public hearing is for tonight, so you'll have to do that. Um, and then after that, we'll talk briefly about the gaming side of things.
Yeah.
So I'll just open up for public hearing, liquor license application. Anybody got any comments they want to make on that? Again, this is pretty much just a ownership change. We've already kind of gone through the process. So, and like you said, there was no issues with the owner of the other bars, so. But I didn't hear anything either, so. Anybody got any questions? One once, go on twice. Any other comments? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. All right. Anybody with anything else you want to say? I was going to look for a motion to accept the liquor license application.
Make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
All second.
If he does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's that's the list. Liquor license. The second one is site authorization at this place for the US Fargo Hockey Association.
So what we have here apologizes brought to you last week here, but as regards to that say authorization for game operations for West Fargo Hockey Association, uh, to be able in the bars, bar excluding the back, their bathrooms, uh, blackjack, a jar of bar, I believe it was pulp tabs to, um, since we're already talking liquor license headquarters, they have a discussion about this. And basically what this does, it's taking sense to say, say, you know, like they have game operations there that may have to go submit their paperwork, this paperwork along with other stuff to state or the state's approval of that. Uh, the reason why you have it tonight is they're trying to get this squared away through the city in order to get time set up or get time with the state to have it reviewed. Uh, there's an individual that's reviewing these applications, my understanding at the state level, so it's a good enough get there. Um, and their overall goal is to be able to be up and ready to go by July one. It's that that was when headquarters is, is made open. So they want to have all their nuts in their own, able to have this by July before July.
Is this July?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Any question for you? So, so this is only, um, blackjack and pulp cap jars. This is not electronic ones, right?
Jason Campbell from West Fargo, Jason Campbell from West Fargo Hockey. Will we ask, um, to be approved for, that the council would, uh, agree? We would like to have bingo, possibly a rap though, have jars, just dancing, and the, uh, E tabs. And then twenty-one, which is blackjack, um, possibly a poker. There's something planned, but hopefully put it on there in case, uh, poker turns up coming down the road and then paddle wheel. Uh, put tickets in the table. It's a plan is to have a, uh, pink wheel going at the headquarters.
So. Brenton?
Yep.
Um, was this just a blank one that was handed out to us or did that need to be filled out further before we approve?
Restrictions, it's a section for us to, yeah. So what you see, you're trying to do is what what I had, so.
So I'm just.
Yeah.
Just because I don't know, I haven't seen.
So we need to check, just to be clear, the bingo, right? The electronic, oh no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we should have you go through your list again a little slower so we can make.
Do that again, so we can make.
Please.
Just to clarify on that for you guys, the state has changed this this year for the city councils to markets. You're seeing a little bathroom, like market, so you guys can see what we're asking.
Yeah, right.
Yes, they they've changed that, so that's why I did read that blank.
That's fine.
But in the first column, it's the first one, third, five, six, and seven. And then the third column over, point one poker, and then the two paddles.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Also, for council, you are able to, my saying is you could do any restrictions or any hours or restrictions to that. Uh, typically, we don't have any restrictions tied to that, but it is at the council's.
I think people like to gamble when they're having a beverage.
Do, uh, yeah, do we have any need to place any restrictions?
No.
I don't think.
I don't know.
I do have a question though. So, and this this isn't directed towards him, this is directed toward Brenton. Uh, how does an organization go about, um, applying for a gaming site at a establishment?
I'd actually defer to the mayor here.
You want to gamble?
No, but I set up the one over here for the Lions.
The Lions.
From the city side, we don't, we really are, yeah.
Right. I mean, basically, the organization does the paperwork. Basically, what this is to put the city on notice that they want to do.
Okay.
Gaming, and then the city can approve or deny.
Okay.
Um, but that's how it starts. The game, gaming operation sets up and does all the paperwork to initially. And then you have to do this on a yearly basis.
Secretary of State has all form documents.
Yes, they have all the form documents. You just basically fill them out and send them in. But again, it's a yearly reauthorization. The organization, the gaming organization pays rent to the facility, so that's another paper trail that you do.
Okay.
They do the, um, the redo paperwork to the state or the city.
Yep.
Well, I want to make sure I'm understanding very clearly. Big Erbs has gaming on behalf of the Lions, the local Lions.
Local Lions, yeah.
And now this organization headquarters will have gaming on behalf of West Fargo Hockey if this is approved, correct? Both excellent organizations to support, um.
You will see the site authorization. I believe this is a yearly thing now that will be in front of you guys. And they'll do this probably because I think we have to have this, if I remember correctly, it was at the end of June. That's when they re-up and then so it's a July one to June thirtieth, site authorization. So.
Yep. Let me just.
You just said one for.
Last week, yeah.
You did one for.
You just said one for lights.
Yes.
Anyway, that is why I, I want to make sure that they get it.
In.
Get them to the state and through the state time for headquarters opening.
Yep.
Thank you for coming prepared, sir.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I have any questions?
Yeah. Otherwise, if not, I'm going to look for a motion to accept the site authorization.
I can make that motion.
Let me make some motion. Can I get a second?
Second, also.
Okay, Sarah, it is a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Go on to nineteen, Jim.
It's, we'll start with the project summaries and their package. You should have, or on the page link, it should have been uh, provided with a copy of all the summaries from the project. You have the one, the estimates and the summaries at the same time. So we'll run through these quickly. Please stop me if you have any questions, but we'll just go anywhere that makes sense. So the first one we have is just a hundred and five. This project is about twelve percent complete, sixty-seven percent of the animal lining. This project is about twelve percent complete, sixty-seven percent of the vandal lining is done. Forty percent of the senators who are forced to, thirty percent of probably is a replacement. This is a little bit of a slower going process where you have projects typically are right now, not two alarms, cause I think once. Since we calculate the complete stuff by value, value burned, um, I think the painting will go quite quickly when they get to that. So right now, they're doing kind of a. Slower rehab work. I have run into some issues with the. As built was. Actually in the ground, so that's been a bunch of.
And those as-built drawings were how old?
They're not terrible.
They're not terribly old.
Oh, actually have them.
That's the thing, we have them.
Actually have them.
Yeah.
So a second one we have here is force proper water replacements. Uh, this one, one thing to be, punch list. Working on that, slowly go surely, and then force the landscaping. Keeping it, it's only getting going. Not quite sure why, keep asking the question and beginning to answer, they were supposed to be here last week, now it's this week or whatever, so. I had staff reach out to them, cause I knew I was gonna get the question tonight, and I couldn't get a good answer to tell you this afternoon, so.
I mean, part of me kinda didn't want to approve earlier in our incentive agenda until it was done, because. I actually have had a lot of complaints.
But I think we're that near to that point now. Next one, they'll have the page all type of. So, uh, I would. So, like I said, the one thing that's remaining here is just some testing and. We've got quite a bit of, quite a bit of uh. Based on the punch list, but I've also been top of them checking, get it done too.
Have we started the process of, Angela, have we started the clock now?
Far as.
As far as turnover?
To Casperell, that's the next one.
Thank you.
Segue.
Thank you.
Alright, so the next one's connection to Casperell. Line was filled today. Uh, Casperell has to do some warranty work on their towers, so the tower was used to fill. Fill and flush the line from the meter ball to the tower, not, wasn't flushed to the tower, but it's flushed on fire hanger. I only disinfected, tested for bacteria twice, and um. The, we had a meeting last week with the Department of Environmental Quality on changing the water source. So in thirty days, Melissa asked to go out, the residents notifying them that their source water will be changing. This case will be changing from Casper, from uh city forest water to Casperell water. Um, we're still waiting for the verbiage that they would like to be used, since it does have to be published, uh, but binder was sent to them today. By that, looking like there'll be a startup for meter ball here in two weeks. Uh, thanks to the property, after that.
Okay.
Uh, once we go through the uh notice, notice process, uh, the water use plan is, is uh. Underway, which just basically says we're closing these valves, opening these valves and. Water comes this way, so working the public works to get a flushing plant. They've got a lot going on this time of year, but uh, that is part of the deal. We have to talk about that, like flushing the plant to get. Through it, so um, not much, like I said, left on that one. Air Gardens third edition, fence is going in. Uh, three, four, so the posts are probably up, figure they're. Get that done by the end of next week, so they'll have all the post concrete in this week and the next week, so that remain, one thing remains on that would be landscaped. I asked the project manager this morning if he saw anything more on that, he has not. So he was uh, going to reach out to contractor to find out what was going on there. South Dale Farms fourth and fifth, fourth edition is complete minus some grading and some. Seating, and the fifth edition, all the underground work is done, they start to build the roads. Uh, probably tomorrow, like their, their water sample today, make sure that all works out. Maple Lakes position phase two, they started it last week with the sanitary sewer. Fleated that on Saturday and actually completed today. They'll start with the water main. Farm, so there is some progress, you may know that. That part of the world, sixty-sixth street, um. Here in their bowels, ten percent complete. Is a rather large project, so we'll uh. Do some coordination, we got some issues on coordination with the fifth edition. Um, we're thinking efficient, fifth edition will be a little further along than where it is right now. Casperell has requirements as far as water main lourings, so we have to wait for those to get here, installed, and now cave gauges. Able to keep moving, keep moving northward on that, on that project. Arrow is third, uh, massive construction fifty. They've used about fifty, fifty-four percent of their time, they're about fifty-three percent done, so I think that will be pretty good. They've had some good drying days there. The last couple of weeks, they've actually had to bring their water pump out, do some, do some watering for compaction, so. Sound like the test went pretty well on Friday, and then they're gonna be going, uh, to drop back, the sixty-sixth street, the plan is not for this month, not coming Monday, but. Next one, we're all finished, just starting bringing in their papers, so probably next week, they'll be bringing it in, they get it going to start on that, on that south end. Up creepy, working, basically, we're just working on uh. Homework building, I know, hasn't been much paperwork done, they've got a lot, long road ahead of them to beat their milestone of. September, but they're getting some work done on there, so. Uh, shared use path. I don't remember phases, since I think it's thirty, thirty-four, so shared use path phase three, four, three, three, three. Phase three and Center Avenue, well, the contracts, we got them back on Friday, we'll leave them with you decided this year.
Yep.
And then we went to schedule a pre-construction conference on that, we talked about wall out west, pre-construction conference towards the end of the week, and uh.
Where's my timing on that shared news path versus what we're doing with wall?
Um.
That shared news path, look at the timing on that.
This one done by, I think it's September, September or February.
That's, I had it written down and have a definitive date, so we still don't have a spot on, it's just fall, basically, right? I, I need you to look at it, cause I couldn't find it. I was trying to coordinate how it's gonna tie in with some of the surrounding area. And the work that's going on. Forgive the interruption, it's just, it's trying to detours, just kinda. Put my arms around somewhere.
I remember where we're at with the pistols. When we're gonna start up with that again.
Right.
We're gonna.
So we've got a change order from them to call this, um, unsuitable subgrade right now.
Yep.
And we're working through some of them, it wasn't. They've got, got some requests, some additional information, got that, that we do, and. Going to bring it to council, we'll. Bring it back, and they were.
And I didn't mean to.
No, you can give me the date after, I just take a look at it and make sure I get it, because I'm coordinating some stuff, so.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
Those are great summaries, Jim, thank you.
Yes.
It's a really good summary of each project.
Got it, alright. Brenton, you got next.
Hey, a few different things to figure out. First one, there is a waste management group changes, they're shooting for July tenth. Do not have the information of a detailed fire anything from right now, but when I do get it. I'll be getting all their staff here and we'll be kicking it out. Also even gave that they'll probably put some fires or information on people's trash cans, exactly, when they go, when it gets posted to that. They were originally looking at for July week, I talked to them all over for July, and I said, we'll start with the fresh week, but I'll all get it later. So, we're looking at July, we did July ten. Uh, December night are trash days, it'll be Tuesdays, Wednesdays, um, and. You try and pass that all as much as you can, like to get the permission share. Uh, spring cleanup, they had delays of shortage of staff, they ended up having to let, let go last week, and then. Another one resigned, that's creating a step in shortage and another one's out sick. Uh, they have been all picking up spring cleanup piles today. Even the managers for all their employees managing. So, we appreciate that they're out there doing that, and it'll probably take a few days to do that. Uh, most of the feedback that I've heard from residents have been, hey, we got more time to put stuff out.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I didn't hear too much. I didn't hear any.
Well, the most.
Problems.
Said, uh, probably, right, tested, heard calls too, was.
Better than.
More time, we'll put stuff out, uh, there were some pretty good sized piles, so.
There, there were, there were people going around, I mean.
Yep.
Mine was delayed, so almost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a reminder for folks though, uh, waste management will not take certain things like tires, uh. But, I imagine Tony had fifteen tires on. Yeah, no, they're not gonna take tires, they're not gonna take old TVs, they're not gonna take hazardous ways like paint and things like that.
We don't, they will or will not take those to some. Post the list of.
Yeah.
For the TVs and stuff, you can take one per month up to the hazardous building up north. Post instructions like that, just so the people know.
We can do like a follow-up with some of those, say, hey, the hazardous is, this, you know, this way you take it. But we did have on Facebook page and I believe on uh, Living Home Lab, um. We did say acceptable things and not acceptable things, and we tried to get that out as a change previous years. Uh, we've had some people put a lot more out, the big thing is you gotta make sure that there's no gas and oil in it. Um, I have heard from some folks, they put them out, hoping that they'll get taken by waste management, but. Reality, they're putting them out there hoping that people are just trying to help when you first step, so take them at that time, so. Uh, anyways, just wanna make, make sure everybody knows, they're out there, it's gonna take them a few days. I did discuss what they mentioned in the future, to where we have cleanup week instead of day. Typically, for the last couple of years, it has taken more than one day to pick up all the piles. So maybe we need to start advertising as a cleanup week instead of a day. So they were receptive to that, and I'll talk to them about it after we get through this one. Uh, they did hire a quite a few temp workers, four or five temp workers to get them through this week, to come, so. Um, waterings, I have this on here, uh. Uh, we look at, we're looking at going live in July, for casserole water. We've delayed the rate increase for water, we go casserole water until we go live, make sure we're live. Um, right now, it's outside, probably around September. September, October timeframe, we can lock that in, as we know more, I wanna make sure that we are live with casserole. If, or at least a month or two, as we've been saying all along, but I just wanna make sure it's on your radar, remind you, that is something that we. Talked about many times, it's just we've got to roll off you, cause there's no way we'd be pushing every increase until, do that. Uh, the rate would be basically nearing casserole's rate, so base is twenty-seven, cost per thousand is five forty. Uh, the one difference, one difference we have is we have our C I P surcharge, which is basically to help with capital improvements and stuff like that, that's seven sixty. However, a change in casserole made last year that we have not reflected is they've introduced like a tiering rate for water. We do not reflect that, cause we're a wholesale customer, for bulk, for bulk water. So we get that flat rate from them, not the tiered rate, is my understanding.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't implemented a tier approach. If we see that as an issue of the future, we could bring that up, unless you guys want us to do, here their tier rates, we could do that too. So, but we can have deeper conversations at later date for that. Um. Another thing I have on here is rescheduling July, July third council meeting. Brought that up at last council meeting, council, if they want to check their calendars. We got Tuesday, June twenty-seventh.
I gotta look at it. Space it on.
And we have pine commission that night too, but we could have council meeting a little later, uh. He said June twenty-seventh.
Monday.
Don't be a Tuesday. Okay, going to do Tuesday, cause park district meets, and I think lines has a meeting after park district that night, so it gets pretty tight. There is flying commission, we could define, define the time, I don't know what flying mission is, or if. Or if that's one of those things we could have, I'd say all we've done that before too, so, um. But with June twenty-seventh for, for the council.
No, for Sarah?
No, I have a conflict. But I, other availability that same week.
Could we go on the flip side and go later? Or, I mean, I'm just, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas.
So not everybody's gonna be here on the fifth?
You can sit, or you still have, well, the, the July third meeting. Uh, you're saying July fifth, Cory?
Yeah, it'd be like a Wednesday.
Yeah.
The day after the fourth.
It's available. Or do you want to order, do you wanna do June twenty-eighth?
We could easily do the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, any, thirtieth, any of those, I, I have a forgets coming up that evening, I'm so sorry.
I said, it's just a week earlier, I didn't know, wanted to do the day after, or if you mean, I got, I've got the twenty-eighth open.
I do too.
Is that Thursday?
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. Followed it.
Went after this church.
Yeah. They'll forgive you.
They'll forgive me, I hope.
Are you saying so June twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
I will not be here. It'll be my daughter's last volleyball league game, so.
Twenty-nine, let's just keep going.
Or you, or you can cancel that one too. Do one.
Do you have any pressing business for that specific?
Put it on IP. Uh, I don't know, going back, I think it would be if we have progressive assets, that. Particularly if you got time, I don't know, so a lot of stage ready stuff, yeah, for agenda. Try to spell straight by.
Yeah, I don't really wanna bundle up on the nineteenth, so.
Gonna make.
Yeah.
There are things that we need to do in the.
Can we just skip it?
We could, we could just cancel it, and we need to have a special meeting.
Alright. I would prefer to do that.
I don't know if I can commit to the twenty-ninth, if we were to try to move it, I, I, I just don't know if I could.
No, I can't do the twenty.
Oh, okay, well then that.
So I mean, it's just. Twenty, hit them the fifth, that's kind of what we're up.
Top, twenty-sixth, Monday.
No, room's booked.
Room's booked, okay, darn it.
Alright, let's just do that, then we'll cancel the first meeting in July, unless we need to do a special meeting for. I'd say for legal, probably, is what I'm looking at more so.
Yeah.
Right? If we need to do a special meeting, we do it because of legal, the rest of the stuff I don't think would be, unless we run into something else, but.
Excuse me, don't have anything.
You what?
I was just kidding.
What, that you know of right now? That you know of right now?
Gotta spread that out.
Yeah, okay, so we will cancel the July third meeting.
Yep.
That was special meeting, necessary. Um, last one is just set by for council, I believe it's in town this week, uh, they're going through our site visit, we're audit. And first day, that's gone, barely yet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
Good stuff.
Good job.
Matt's, Matt's not trying to pick arguments with me. Never pick an argument with a. Back with me.
Yeah, Matt.
I, I know that we've come a long way in our accounting and our auditing in the last several years, so we appreciate your efforts, thank you. I know that's kind of a challenge.
Alright, any else? Alright.
You wanna cover uh any open positions or not?
But you can, well, we have the reception's position open and as posted right now.
Okay.
They'll have it posted in two weeks. I was gonna let you guys.
Okay, so now we're done?
I'm good.
Okay, we'll move on to portfolio reports then. So I met with the upcoming seniors at the high school here on the twenty-second to invite them to the hundred and fiftieth school reunion, we're gonna be doing. All school reunion for the old school over here. Um, the graduating class from nineteen sixty-two, there's four of them that's still here, and we're gonna invite them back for the. Kinda have a, like I said, an all school reunion, but we've got the graduating, last graduating class. From nineteen sixty-two will be here on Thursday night of Bean Days. And then, so we invited the to-be senior class to join us. For that sixty-two year spread, it'll be kinda interesting.
That is neat, that's really neat.
So, um, yeah, I've tried to jack them up to try and get them to come on over, and some of them will, but I don't know if I can get the whole group, but just if I can get half of them there and.
Are you gonna do anything fun for younger?
Oh, it'll be fun.
They're probably not, I mean, no offense to.
Yep, they're not all gonna be there, I know.
Seventeen, eighteen, they're gonna hang out with some.
It's gonna be fun.
We'll see what they could do. I'll, got an invite, told them what was going on.
Alright.
Cake box and.
Sure, all that stuff. Um, just, also, we did a lion's parade, um, with everybody, with the kids underneath their banners, we had. Not everybody there, but we had enough, and it was fun to go do it. Uh, got, I think it was uh forty-five, fifty vehicles to chase them around, so it was kinda fun. I am still working on getting one-on-one scheduled with you guys the last week, a week and a half has gotten out of hand, so I'm hoping here's next week, we can get some of these done, or next two weeks, so. I will work on that, so, that's all I got. Sarah, what do you have?
We have been up to our eyeballs in pre-construction meetings this spring. It has been fun, um. Basically, just working through the pre-com meetings, uh, keeping track of progress, working on change order items and. Reviewing buildings has been most of, eaten up most of my evenings for the. Eating up most of my evenings for the last several months. It's been fun. Since we skipped spring and went straight into summer. I don't have anything other than that. It has been mayhem.
Okay. Naomi, what do you have?
I was just wondering where we were at with private drive sign. Um, if they still need to go up.
One and up on.
Probably over here, though, by.
I have, yeah, I have one by.
Yeah.
Were sent all of the, the immigration way last week or.
Okay.
All of the specs of what those things look like, so I'll follow up.
Okay. How many private drives do we have in town?
Yeah, Jack's way, James way, United, Divide. Not comfortable. Please. Let's say.
Okay, so every single one of them are getting a sign?
The old ones.
They all.
Very old ones, very old ones, the new developments, guys.
Okay. Um. I also was wondering where we were at right now. I know I'm hounding you about the live streaming, but where in the world are those hurt?
I apologize, I skipped my notes and he's been highlighted up, so. The note I even have says install is scheduled for Wednesday.
Excellent. Thank you, because I was gonna say.
I don't know if they got that last, those last parts or two, but they're doing overall install Wednesday and they coordinated with fire. So that should be Wednesday when they're gonna do that. Acknowledge, I even had highlighted and skipped over it.
They don't have the parts? They can't complete them? They're gonna leave.
I don't know if they have that last part or not. I'm just saying that they're doing install Wednesday. I don't hope they got their last partner.
Yeah, anything else?
Um, no, just excited with our new, with my portfolio of the planning and zoning for our new um sitting members to join us. That'll be good to get to know them and. Well, that's about it.
Okay, Stephanie, what you got?
Um, we just continue, uh, lots of work on the hundred and fiftieth planning. Paul's been awesome and has really hit the ground running on that. It's been wonderful. Um, and I think the invitations out like uh the mayor talked about for the Thursday evening event, I think the written invitations to the older residents were going out very soon. Um, and there were actually a lot of. Uh, names and addresses that were gathered. Um, so it could actually be quite a big crowd for uh the older residents, which I think is gonna make for a wonderful, really wonderful evening. Um. Um, I think that's it. We just continue with lots and lots of meetings on a hundred and fiftieth. And we're kind of hitting critical time here, so, but it's been going well. That's all I have.
Okay, Jeff, what you got?
Uh, I don't know a whole lot. Um, we did have a meeting today for Metro Cog, um. This is my first meeting there with Ben. I'm sure you've met Ben now. And um seems very organized, very meticulous. I do appreciate that. Um, as far as uh from the HR and you know, operations side, um, did have some interviews last week. And um as Brenton alluded to, we will be um keeping that position open for another couple of weeks, uh, to see who else applies. Or making decisions on hiring somebody. That is it, my update.
Okay. All right, so next thing I have on the list here is uh we do an executive session held pursuant to N D C C forty-four dash oh four dash nineteen point one, subsection nine. To discuss negotiating strategies or provide negotiating instructions to our attorney. Another negotiator regarding a contract for purchase of real property or related to the B N S F railroad property. So look for a motion to.
One second.
No, they want me to go back.
You should.
Yeah.
Going.
Let's just finish this. We gotta need to make a motion to go on executive session. We'll pause for five minutes.
I'll make a motion.